Thank you so much. The November 2, 2020, meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:00 PM. I'm Loretta Gonzalez, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Councilmember Juarez.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Mosqueta.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Sawant.
Here.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Presentations, colleague. There is one presentation as we discussed this morning during council briefing. The presentation will be facilitated by Councilmember Mosqueta, so I am going to now recognize Councilmember Mosqueta in order to present a proclamation recognizing Affordable Housing Week. Councilmember Mosqueta.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'm really excited about the proclamation that we have in front of us today, recognizing the city's Affordable Housing Week. Every year we do this. We recognize the affordable housing advocates, the community at large, the individuals who've come together to support making sure that all in our community have access to the affordable housing, comprehensive and accessible housing that our city needs. And this year is similar in that we want to make sure that this is recognized in statute, that we have a historical document that recognizes the importance of Affordable Housing Week. And we are doing it in retrospect, though. We're recognizing Affordable Housing Week, which was October 12 through 16 of this year. As I mentioned in council briefing this morning, we celebrate Affordable Housing Week with our community partners such as the Housing Development Consortium and the over 100 participants that they have within their consortium who've been working on fighting for affordable housing, inclusive housing, and against racist restrictive zoning covenants, fighting against exclusionary lending policies, and are continuing to fight to create a more inclusive zoning policy in our city and more affordable dollars for building affordable housing. Because the market alone is not producing the housing. We know that it's both a zoning issue and a funding issue. The need for affordable housing and homes across King County prior to COVID pandemic was already grave. We were already in a state of emergency, and the number of people experiencing homelessness has continued to climb. We know that in the point in time count, the most recent one, it found that 4,000, I'm sorry, 4,428 people in our community were sleeping outdoors without shelter, and that was in January before COVID really hit our community. More than two-thirds of Seattle's low-income households are considered housing cost burden because they spend more than 30% of their incomes on rent and utilities, which puts them at risk for greater housing insecurity. And this was also before the COVID pandemic hit. We've made big improvements in our city and in our region. At our county level, we've been working with our partners to try to secure additional revenue for housing. We did this through Jumpstart, and the county is continuing to work to make sure that there's additional funding for those who need additional housing. But we also need to update our zoning policies and create a more diverse, affordable, and accessible housing option in every neighborhood in the city. The scale of the affordable housing crisis that we're facing is this. According to the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force, we need 156,000 more affordable homes today and another 88,000 affordable homes by 2024 to ensure that no lone family or working household is cost burden in our region. As we work to right these historic wrongs and create equity in our system, we do this through the racial justice lens that it deserves, recognizing that our Black Indigenous and people of color communities, our lower-wage workers, have been dramatically and disproportionately affected by the high cost of housing in our city. We work with partners throughout our efforts to make sure that we are creating not just the housing units, but that we are creating housing units that are culturally relevant in neighborhoods where people have been historically displaced, and making sure that we are creating the housing that the community demands by making sure that it's done through their lens. Today, we have with us some of these important partners that have been working with us, and Madam President, I might ask if it's okay if I mention their names and turn it over to them.
You may mention their names and introduce them, but I will need to make a formal procedural suspension of the rules motion in order to allow them to address the council. So if you'd like, please introduce the folks who are going to virtually receive the proclamation, and then I will go through the procedural steps of suspending the rules.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I also want to say thank you to our council colleagues. Everyone has signed on, including the mayor's office. To receive this proclamation today, we have Asalef Evans from the Equity and Programs Manager and Mallory Van Averman, Policy and Advocacy Manager from the Housing Development Consortium, who are here with us to accept the proclamation on behalf of their over 100 membership organizations and community at large who's been working for greater affordable housing and in partnership with those across this region to make sure everybody has a place to call home. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta. So colleagues, if there is no objection, the council rules will be suspended to allow the presentation of the proclamation and to allow brief remarks to the council. Hearing no objection, we can go ahead and proceed with the presentation and allow our guests to address the city council.
Okay. Good afternoon. So I am Mallory Van Averma at the Housing Development Consortium. Thank you so much, Madam President, Seattle council members for letting us join you today. Asalef is not able to join us, so I'm just going to share our gratitude for city council's leadership and also leadership of the city just around affordable housing issues. During the fifth annual Affordable Housing Week, things looked remarkably different from previous years. However, the overall goal of emphasizing the need for more affordable housing options across our region remained central and has only become more critical with the immediate housing stability impacts of COVID-19 being felt most bluntly by our Black Indigenous and people of color community members. Today, we want to extend our gratitude to leadership for ongoing efforts to meet the housing needs of all Seattle residents, regardless of the household income, Seattle's stewardship of funds generated by the housing levy to meet the deepest affordability levels, increased support for affordable rental and homeownership opportunities, prioritization of housing options for neighbors who are navigating chronic homelessness, and strengthening protections for renters in the city and building on strategic partnerships to best utilize the scarce land resources our city has to work with are all accomplishments that we've been proud to work alongside the city to advance. However, we recognize there is so much more work to be done. So thank you so much for taking the time to honor 2020 Affordable Housing Week, and let's continue to move forward together.
Thank you, Mallory, for those comments and for being with us today during full council. Please do send our regrets to your colleague for not being able to be here, and we are so happy to be able to support this particular proclamation and to support our colleague who chairs the committee responsible for housing to advance this proclamation, even if it's retrospective. So Councilmember Mosqueta, anything else to add here?
No, very excited. Thank you so much for all of our colleagues for signing on and really, really proud that this gets concretized in our historical records as well. And we will continue to work with all of you to make sure that we're showing change year over year in addition to these proclamations.
Colleagues, any other comments from you? Hearing none. Mallory, thank you so much for being with us. You're, of course, welcome to leave the meeting now, virtually, and we appreciate all of the work that you and your good folks over at HDC continue to do on behalf of the city of Seattle and the region. So thank you so much. Okay, folks, we're going to go ahead and move through the items of business on our agenda. Next up is approval of the minutes. The minutes of the city council meeting of October 26, 2020 have been reviewed. If there is no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objection, the minutes are being signed. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes? Adoption of the referral calendar. If there is no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. Approval of the agenda. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is now adopted. Public comment. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the remote public comment period for items on the city council agenda, introduction and referral calendar, and the council's 2020 work program. I thank everyone for their ongoing patience and cooperation as we continue to operate this remote public comment system. It remains the strong intent of the city council to have remote public comment regularly included on our meeting agendas. However, as a reminder, the city council reserves the right to end or eliminate these public comment periods at any point if we deem that the system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and effectively. I will moderate today's public comment period in the following manner. The public comment period of this meeting is 20 minutes, and each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. I will call on each speaker by name and in the order in which they registered on the council's website. If you have not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of public comment by going to the council's website at seattle.gov/council. That's C-O-U-N-C-I-L. The public comment link is also listed on today's agenda. Once I call a speaker's name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and an automatic prompt of you have been unmuted will be the speaker's cue that it is their turn to speak. But before speaking, the speaker must press star six to begin speaking. So again, for the callers, once you hear the prompt of you have been unmuted, you must hit star six before speaking. Please begin speaking by stating your name and the item you are addressing. As a reminder, public comments should relate to an item on today's agenda, the introduction and referral calendar, or the council's 2020 work program. At about 10 seconds, speakers will hear a chime. That means that they have exactly 10 seconds to wrap up their comments. And if speakers don't end their comments at the end of the allotted time provided, the speaker's microphone will be automatically muted to allow us to call on the next speaker. For those who are unable to get through all of their public comments, you're always welcome to email your full public comments to thefullcouncil@seattle.gov. Once you've completed your public comment, we ask that you please disconnect from the line, and if you plan to continue following this meeting, please do so via Seattle Channel or the listening options listed on the agenda. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Again, for the speakers who are signed up and pre-registered, you will hear the prompt of you have been unmuted, and then after you hear that automatic prompt, you will press star six before speaking to us. So, let's see, it's 2:13 PM. We'll go until approximately 2:33 PM or until we exhaust the list of those who have signed up for public comment. First up-
And Madam President, if I may for just one moment, this is Councilmember Lewis. I just wanted to announce before public comment that I am present.
Yes, for the record, Councilmember Lewis joined the full council meeting at 2:02 PM. I apologize, Councilmember Lewis, for not taking a moment to reflect that. I was moving, going through the paces here. Thanks for the interruption.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, first up is Howard Gale, and then we will hear from Joe Kunsler. We also have Stephanie Anderson, who is listed as not present but registered. So Stephanie, if you can hear me, time to call back in. And then Lorette Colbert, also listed as not present, but did pre-register. So Lorette and Stephanie, if you are listening, now is the time for you to call back in if you'd like to offer public testimony. Howard Gale.
Hi, can you hear me? Press star six.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, good. Hi, good afternoon. It's Howard Gale, Lower Queen Anne District 7, speaking on police accountability. Councilmembers have failed to really articulate what measure of justice or comfort our existing police accountability system has brought to the families and loved ones of Charlene Lyles, Kyle Gray, Jason Severs, Iosefa Altogo, Danny Rodriguez, Brian Smith, John Lee Fur, Eric Haver, and the 19 others killed by Seattle Police since the murder of John T. Williams. Seattle needs a police accountability system governed by mercy and morality and not whether a murder has become a mean. We need a system that is sensitive to tragedy and not to what is trending, a system motivated by empathy and not by avoiding embarrassment, a system that seeks justice and not justification, a system that seeks to protect life and not to justify policy. We need a system like that proposed by Councilmember Sawant, a true community-based and independent police oversight entity. Why does Seattle not deserve the police accountability system that the people of Newark, New Jersey, and Nashville, Tennessee have put in place? Why does Seattle not deserve the police accountability system that San Diego, Portland, and Chicago are struggling to develop? All these cities have or are developing independent, community-based oversight entities. The current Washington State Governor's Task Force meeting now on independent investigations is wrapping up this week with final recommendations that are precisely in line with what these other cities have or are developing and are the exact opposite of Seattle's current system, police investigating police with no community oversight. Please support Councilmember Sawant's proposal for true police accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Joe Kunsler, and again, if Stephanie Anderson or Lorette Colbert can hear me, now is the time to call back in if you'd like to offer some public comment. Joe, please.
Well, thank you, Council President Gonzalez. This is one of your fans, Joe Kunsler. I want you to know that I unsubscribed from the Seattle Times today because of that racist sexist cartoon of you in the paper. I think it's absolutely abominable that, you know, Mr. Horsey draws in that newspaper, and I'm all for free speech and all, but I don't think we need to subsidize hate speech. I've spoken out, again, as you know, Council President, I've spoken out against Alex Zimmerman for nauseating years now, and I think that Mr. Horsey deserves a censure from the city council and possibly loss of business because his tropes and cartoons go beyond legitimate criticism of policy to personal attacks and, God forbid, worse. And I don't approve of that. I never have approved of that, and I never will. My, I really hope that people unsubscribe from the Seattle Times. And with a little bit of time left, I'm going to ask the Seattle, I'm asking a lot of local governments to do this. So I also ask the world-famous Seattle Council to please lobby the state legislature for online meetings, and if that's too difficult, at least online public comment and model rules for public comment to eliminate hate speech and include diverse voices from the disabled community, from BIPOC voices, from more strong women like the members of the Seattle Council who I don't always agree with, but I hope to God I've always respected their intelligence because you certainly are smart. And with that hopefully positive note, I will yield my time and thank you for your service, Council President Gonzalez. You're awesome.
Thank you for calling in today. Okay, looks like we have not had either Stephanie or Lorette call back in. I'm going to refresh one more time here. Okay, colleagues, that does conclude our list of both pre-registered and present public commenters. So we're going to go ahead and close out the period of public comment and take up our first item of business on the agenda, which is payment of the bills. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Bill 119944, appropriate management pays out in claims for the week of October 19, 2020 through October 23, 2020, and ordering the payment thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I moved to pass Council Bill 119944. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the bill passed. Are there any comments? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Herbold.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis. Lewis. Morales.
Aye.
Mosqueta.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
This is Councilmember Lewis voting aye. I'm sorry, my mute wasn't coming undone.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation? Committee reports of the city council, item one. Will the clerk please read item one into the record?
Item one, Council Bill 119905, relating to the lease of city property authorized in the director of Finance and Administrative Services or the directors designate to execute a 99-year lease agreement with Africa Town Community Land Trust for former Fire Station 6 located at 101 23rd Avenue, Seattle, Washington, 98122, for the use as the William Gross Center for Cultural Innovation to provide for culturally responsive services that support the African-American community in the central area to create pathways to self-determination and for future development and expanded activation of the property as described in the lease.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I moved to pass Council Bill 119905. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Mosqueta, you are the sponsor of this bill and are recognized in order to address this item.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I really am excited about this and the next item on our agenda today. This legislation and the following one come to the council after many years of advocacy from members in the community. We recognize the long wait that these organizations have gone through and their strong advocacy and their continued commitment to making sure that the plans for these two areas and these two sites continue to move forward. We, both through this council and previous councils, have worked with them and helped to advance this legislation in front of us, recognizing the opportunity that this place provides for us to create a true community space. We do recognize that during budget deliberations, we don't often take up additional pieces of legislation, but given the long wait that these organizations have gone through, it's an incredible opportunity and privilege for us to be able to move this forward today. I want to thank the council president, who's been working with us to carve out time during both the council briefing to make sure that both pieces of legislation had the time and the opportunity to provide the historical context to it, and also to make sure that we got these items added to the agenda. This is incredibly important opportunity for us to both highlight the work that's gone into these efforts, but also to have public recognition for the long advocacy that it took to get here. Last week, we heard from representatives from Africa Town Community Land Trust, Wa Na Wari, from Flourish Financial, and Please Come Again, about what this site will mean particularly for Black youth in the neighborhood. Named after the entrepreneur, the building developer of the site of the Central District, William Gross, this center would invest in education, skills, and job opportunities for community members, particularly youth serving as a hub for innovation already taking place in the Central District. This community asset will help close the gap we are already seeing in Seattle, where there is an astronomical economic growth that is not resulting in all communities benefiting. In fact, economic disparities have grown particularly in Seattle's Black Indigenous and people of color communities. The opportunity to provide support through Africa Town Community Land Trust from this former site, which was Fire Station 6, for the use of William Gross Center for Cultural Innovation couldn't come fast enough, and really excited about the vote today.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta, for those comments, and I see that Councilmember Sawant also has her hand up, and colleagues, for those of you who may also want to make comments, please do let me know. Councilmember Sawant, please.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. I am, of course, very happy to be voting yes on this and finally voting on the legislation leasing the former Fire Station 6 to Africa Town. Community organizers have been demanding this for years, and this legislation has long been overdue. In a sense, today we are celebrating the property transfers of the former Fire Station 6 and in the upcoming item, the central into community control after years of organizing and the efforts of hundreds of community members. And at the same time, we have to ask, why does it take years, and in the case of the central, over a decade, to get a single building into permanent community needs? Why did the mayor sit on this legislation for almost three years of her term, and why did she finally agree to move on it now? Ultimately, I believe that we would not have had this legislation in front of us had it not been for the tremendous impact of the Justice for George Floyd movement. All around the world, tens of millions of people took to the streets in multiracial protests against police violence. In fact, just in the United States, we had over 26 million show up, but also in opposition to the crushing neglect and underinvestment in our Black and Brown communities by the political establishment in cities around the country. And around the country, the political establishment have, under the pressure of that movement, conceded real community investments, which is a victory for the movement, and however small, they are very important nonetheless. But at the end of the day, the political establishment has not conceded its power in any real sense in city after city. The police have not been defunded by 50% or defunded at all in reality, although some small changes have been made in different cities, which is also important. But we have not seen the scale of affordable housing that our communities need, and what we see is political establishments making the smallest investments that they can get away with in the face of community pressure. It is excellent that these property transfers are going through. It's a testament to the organizing of Africa Town and the Black Lives Matter movement as a whole. And while welcoming this development, we also should remember that Africa Town has proposed to develop a whole city block in the heart of the Central District at the site of the former Cairo Center to provide a full square block of affordable housing to help prevent and reverse the displacement of working-class Black people from the central area. And as of now, only Councilmember Morales has supported the amendment from my office, the budget amendment from my office, to make sure that this project is fully funded by the city. And I really urge all council members to support this because it should not take another five, 10, or 15 years for them to win that project as well because we know that affordable housing is in dire crisis, and whatever investments we can make this year, we should make them, especially in the face of the pandemic. So again, I'm happy to vote yes and will continue to support Africa Town's community developments in the budget votes later this month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Any other comments on the bill? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Herbold.
Yes.
Juarez.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation? Item number two. Will the clerk please read Agenda Item Two into the record?
Agenda Item Two, Council Bill 119906, relating to the transfer of city property located at 530th Avenue South, Seattle, Washington, authorizing the conveyance of the property to Central Area Senior Center, a Washington nonprofit corporation, consistent with the intent of Resolution 31856, and to provide for the continued delivery of social services, making findings of facts about the consideration for the transfers superseding Resolution 31837 for the purposes of this ordinance and operating the Director of Finance and Administrative Services or designate to execute and deliver documents necessary to carry out the conveyance of such property on the term and conditions of this ordinance.
That was a mouthful. Thank you, Amelia, for reading that title into the record. I will move to pass Council Bill 119906. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. Councilmember Mosqueta, you are the sponsor of this bill as well and are recognized in order to address this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This ordinance, well, the short title is that it would authorize the transfer to the Central Area Senior Center, the property at 530th Avenue, for the continued delivery of social services. So this is the senior center, folks, who have been for a long time advocating to have the ability to have the reins and be able to continue to invest in the community and provide the critical services that they offer to a very diverse group of seniors, mostly in the Black community, and really excited again about this piece of legislation. Councilmembers will recall that last month, we passed legislation transferring the Bird Bar Place property to the organization. This transfer follows up on that as mutual offsetting benefit sites that have been occupied by community organizations for decades, and the city has been in the process of transferring to community organizations since the Nichols administration. In late 2018, the council then passed a resolution asking the executive to ensure that the transfer of the properties that have a mutual and offsetting benefits lease to the organizations currently residing in those facilities be a- in those facilities be accomplished no later than March of 2019. And as we talked about last week, here we are, October 2020. It's been a long process to get here, but we are here and we are celebrating. Over the last couple of years, the Central Area Senior Center has been in negotiations with an interdepartmental team and the mayor's office on this transfer, and we know that this process has not exactly been straightforward, and the goalposts seem to have been moved at various points along the ways. But we're excited to be able to join with them in applauding this effort today, applaud the organization for hanging in there and their continued push to make sure that this transfer actually happened. The Central Area Senior Center has been providing vital services in the community for over 50 years, and their mission is to celebrate and serve all seniors, especially those of African-American and African immigrant backgrounds that live in King County. Last Monday, we heard about all of the great work of the organization and how this transfer will ensure that they're able to continue this work into the future. And this transfer will enable the senior center to modernize the building, to accommodate for even more programs, redesign the interior, update the systems and parking, and reflect the rich historical and cultural significant heritage associated with the Central's mission, associated with the center's mission, founding, and vision. So we're excited about this legislation today, and congratulations again.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta. Are there any additional comments? Councilmember Sawant, please.
Thank you, President Gonzalez, and I join Councilmember Mosqueta in congratulating the community members who have, for a decade, for over a decade, advocated for the Central Area Senior Center property to be transferred to the community organizations, to be retained fully for public use. They have struggled through years of City Hall inertia and opposition to make this happen. Just to add a few points about what the seniors did to achieve the success, on April 23, 2019, nearly 100 seniors rallied at City Hall alongside Africa Town Community Land Trust and many other community members that were there supporting them at a rally in City Hall in the lobby and alongside my office, and many of them were enthusiastically chanting "No More Delays" in reference to Mayor Durkin's continued stalling. And I wanted to also, once again, thank Diane Ferguson and others for their leadership of this community effort. Right after the rally that day, the seniors attended the council committee meeting chaired by my office to hear our resolution calling on the mayor to move forward with the property transfers. And after that, the seniors, along with staff from my office, delivered dozens of letters directly to the mayor's office calling for the transfer of the Central and Bird Bar Place to Community Control so that the services can be run permanently for public benefit, run by the community, and to everyone regardless of income. Then, in the week following, more than 250 other community members also wrote letters to the mayor calling for the transfer and preservation of the centers. It may seem like this property transfer would not make a material difference between a property owned by the city of Seattle rented at no cost to the Central Area Senior Center, which has been the case in the past, and transferring ownership to the Seattle Area Central Area Senior Center. However, it does make one important difference. This property transfer protects the Central from the possibility of valuable land under their feet being sold out from under their feet whenever the political establishment might want to raise funds that way rather than looking for raising progressive revenues. And this is very important, especially given the prime location that the Central is located at. Anybody who's visited the Central Area Senior Center will know exactly what I'm talking about. It is an incredible location with unbelievable views, and no doubt, many corporate developers have had their eye on it. We must not forget that the Mercer Mega Block sale at the end of 2019 was accepted by community organizations only because the money it generated was promised to go to affordable housing and to stop displacement, a promise that unfortunately the mayor has once again let down the community on in our proposed budget. The Central provides an incalculable service to the seniors in the Central District, which is my neighborhood, and I'm delighted to vote in favor of this legislation, transferring the senior center permanently to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Any other comments on the bill? Councilmember Herbold, please.
Thank you so much, and thank you both to Councilmember Mosqueta and Sawant for sharing the, not necessarily going all the way back on the history on this, but at least the recent history. I really appreciate reading into the record elements from the resolution that the council passed in 2018. I worked with Councilmember O'Brien on that resolution, as I know many of us on the council did, and that was a resolution that we took action on because of the community frustration on the lack of progress on the disposition of these properties over the years. I do have a question. I don't know if Councilmember Mosqueta, you might know, given your role as chair of the committee, or if the district council member might know, but I'm wondering what the status is of the Greenwood Senior Center. That is one of the three properties that we lifted in the 2018 resolution as properties that had gone through many iterations under many mayors. And those three properties of, I think, seven or eight different mutually offsetting benefit lease properties had been identified as sort of ready-to-go, had been reviewed extensively about whether or not they would be appropriate to be, to use as land to develop housing instead. And just wondering what the status is on that one, because it is the last one of the three that we identified in the 2018 resolution as priorities.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold, for those comments and for the question related to the, was it the Greenwood Community Center? Okay.
Greenwood Senior Center.
Oh, Greenwood Senior Center. Thank you so much. So I'm just going to open it up here for either the district representative or the good chair of our Housing Committee who might have some additional information on that related issue. So, Councilmember Mosqueta, do you have anything, or does the district representative have anything on this?
I am happy to defer to the district representative, and also we'll be looking into it on our end as well.
And always, of course, this Greenwood area kind of depends on what side of Greenwood you're on. It determines your district rep, but I see Councilmember Strauss is off mute, so perhaps he has some information or insight on this particular issue.
I believe it is in District Six. That would be right in my district. And I know, having spoken with Noah on, we had resolved any outstanding questions at this time, although not having this on the docket for today, I did not prepare my notes, and unfortunately, I did not get a response from him in these last 30 seconds. So I believe that the issue is resolved. Councilmember Herbold, we will follow up if that is not the case.
Really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
That's great. Thank you so much. Of course, we are always looking for opportunities to identify additional, you know, additional projects where we can replicate some of this good work, and so look forward to getting an update from council central staff when they have the capacity to do so, and certainly from Councilmember Strauss, if he learned some information from consultation with his staff. Really appreciate the question. Any other comments on this bill? Okay, hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Herbold. Juarez.
Yes.
Lewis. Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation? Okay, Items Three through 21. Will the clerk please read Items Three through 21 into the record?
Agenda Items Three through 21, Appointment 1662 through 1680, appointments and reappointments of Anthony Bridgewater, Ben DiGiulio, Stuart Germain, Christian Gunter, Brian L. Johnson, Catherine List, Emily Van, Jill Dern, David Bader, John Chang, Christopher Cooley, Jeffrey Floor, Sharon Kosla, Aaron Luoma, John Arthur Moorfield, Edward P., Palashak, Kenny Pleasant, Lauren Rock, Scott Rosenstock, and Dan Russler as members, Design Review Board for term to April 3, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move to confirm Appointments 1662 through 1680. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded to confirm Appointments 1662 through 1680. Councilmember Strauss, as you mentioned during council briefing this morning, you are the sponsor of these appointments and are recognized in order to address them.
Thank you, Council President. In following up, I did receive another update from Noah on my staff about the mutually offsetting benefits. Unfortunately, the correct paperwork was not filed at the appropriate time, but Greenwood Senior Center is in touch with Department of Neighborhoods, and no further outreach is needed. Should be coming before us next year. Thank you, Council President. Speaking now to the Design Review Appointments, the Design Review Boards review development applications to evaluate their appearance, access, and relationship to adjacent areas, and the quality of materials and landscaping. Right now, we have eight Design Review Boards, one for each geographic area. And our first appointment is Anthony Bridgewater, who is a project manager at King County, where he underwrites and manages affordable housing projects. He is being appointed to the Central Area Design Review Board. Next, we have Jen DiGiulio. Jen is a senior development manager at Touchstone Development and is being appointed to the Northwest Design Review Board. Up next, we have Stuart Germain. Stuart is an architect and a senior design, senior development manager at Skanska Commercial Development USA, and is being appointed to the Southeast Design Review Board. Next up, we have Christian Gunter. Christian is the Vice President of Development at Alexandria Real Estate and is being appointed to the Northeast Design Review Board. Up next, we have Brian Johnson. Brian is a project architect at Environmental Works and is being appointed to the Northwest Design Review Board. Next, we have Catherine List. Catherine is a landscape architect at Gustafson Guthrie Nickel and is being appointed to the Northeast Design Review Board. Additionally, we have the appointment of Emily Van Geldren, Geldren, excuse me. Emily is a landscape architect and project manager at Site Workshop and is being appointed to the East Design Review Board. Emily just has worked on projects important to me, including the Green Lake Community Boathouse and the Thomas Street Concept Plan that we've discussed much in these last few budgeting cycles. The next appointment is of David Bader. David is a landscape architect at Seattle Parks and Recreation, and he is being appointed to the Southeast Design Review Board. Following is John Chang. John Chang is an architect and project designer at Ankrum Moisen Architects and is being appointed to the Southwest Design Review Board. Following, we have the appointment of Christopher Cooley. Christopher is an architect and general contractor at Graham Construction and is being appointed to the Southeast Design Review Board. Following, we have the appointment of Jeffrey Floor. Jeffrey is an architect at LMN Architects and is being appointed to the Central Area Design Review Board. Following, we have the appointment of Sharon Colsa. Sharon is a principal at Five Dot Architects and is being appointed to the Central Area Design Review Board. Additionally, we have the appointment of Aaron Luoma. Aaron is a landscape architect at Howe Beck &amp; Baird and is being appointed to the Downtown Design Review Board. Following, we have the appointment of John Arthur Moorfield. John is an architect at Jackson Maine Architecture and is being appointed to the West Design Review Board. Additionally, we have the appointment of Edward Paulshick. Edward is an architect at Perkins Will and is being appointed to the Downtown Design Review Board. Following, we have the appointment of Kenny Pleasant. Kenny owns Global Investor Solutions, a real estate investment business that aims to preserve and restore communities, as well as he is a real estate broker at RE/MAX and is being appointed to the Central Area Design Review Board. Additionally, we have the appointment of Lauren Rock. Lauren is an architect at Weinstein AU and is being appointed to the Northwest Design Review Board. Following, we have the appointment of Scott Rosenstock. Scott is a project manager at Seco Development and is being appointed to the Southwest Design Review. And lastly, and not least, we have the appointment of Dan Russler. Dan is an architect at Workshop AD and is being appointed to the Northeast Design Review Board. Council President, I believe those are all of the appointments before us under this section.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss, for walking us through all of those appointments and reappointments. And just for the general public's understanding, we do receive the appointment packets in advance, and in this instance, we received those appointment packets last week, and the appointment packets were published. So if there aren't, if there isn't a robust conversation here about each of these appointments or reappointments, it's not because we haven't looked at the files or haven't considered the materials. It is simply a fact of likely the case that we've all done our homework and sort of already reviewed the appointment packets, and really appreciate you walking us through each one of these, Councilmember Strauss, this afternoon. Are there any additional comments on these appointments? Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointment?
Herbold.
Yes.
Juarez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries, and the appointments are confirmed. Okay, will the clerk please read Items 22 through 34 into the record?
Agenda Items 22 through 34, Appointments 1681 through 1693, Appointments of Bill Babbitt, Lily Efnar, Joe Tremblay, and Robert Stephen Lane as members, Construction Codes Advisory Board for term to June 1, 2022. Appointments and reappointments of Finnegan Wederu, Jamie P. Yangel, Charles E. Beck, Joel Crabtree, Lachlan Price Foss, Greg Gilda, Jim Safrinac, Judy Chucker, and Eric Vandermei as members, Construction's Code Advisory Board for term to June 1, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading those appointments into the record. I will move to confirm Appointments 16810 through 1693. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to confirm Appointments 1681 through 1693. Councilmember Strauss, you are also the sponsor of these appointments and are recognized in order to address them.
Thank you, Council President. The Construction Codes Advisory Board reviews and recommends changes to the city's construction codes, including requirements for energy efficiency and sustainability, which we will be considering later this year. We have a number of appointments before us. First off is the appointment of Bill Babbitt. Bill is a longtime member of the commercial office property management industry, mostly with Bento Kennedy. Next, we have Lily Efnar. Lily is a senior technical engineer with Sellin Construction. Following, we have the appointment of Joe Tremblay. Joe is the pre-construction project manager and senior construction project manager at Valley Electric. Additionally, we have Finnegan Wederu. Finnegan is a senior property manager, project manager at Charter Construction. Additionally, we have the appointment of Jamie Yangel. Jamie is a principal at Cone Architecture. We have the appointment of Charles Beck. Charles works for the Design Engineering Branch of the United States Army Corps of Engineers. We have the appointment of Joel Crabtree. Joel is a business agent with Plumbers Pipefitters, UA Local 32. And we have the appointment of Locken Priest Foss. Locken is a construction manager at Bellwether Housing, and my apologies if I mispronounced your name. We also have the appointment of Greg Gilda. Greg is the Vice President with DCI Engineers. Additionally, we have the appointment of Robert Stephen Lane. Robert Stephen Lane is an architect and has worked as a senior technical architect with NBBJ Architects. Additionally, we have the appointment of Jill Safrinac. Jim, or Jim Safrinac, excuse me, is the principal of the Safrinac Group, which conducts site surveys and reviews plans for code compliance. Additionally, we have Jody Tucker. Jody is the founder of Form Plus Function Architecture. And lastly, not least, we have Eric Vandermei. Eric is a principal with the Russian Company. Thank you, Council President. That brings me to the conclusion.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. Colleagues, are there any additional comments on these appointments? Hearing none. Hearing, none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointments?
Herbald. Juarez.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The motion carries, and the appointments are confirmed. Colleagues, that does conclude the main items of business on our agenda. Is there any other further business to come before the council? Okay, hearing, no further business to come before the council. We'll go ahead and move down. Colleagues, again, this does conclude the items of business on today's agenda. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is on Monday, November 9, 2020, at 2:00 PM. I want to wish you all a good, safe, and healthy pre-election day eve, evening, and I do hope that all of you have a wonderful afternoon. I look forward to seeing you all tomorrow and to, and to seeing what the day, the new day, brings us all here in Seattle and across the country. So for today, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, colleagues. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Bye.